Good morning. Welcome to the City of Morton Council meeting for June 22nd. It's 9:00 a.m., about o'clock behind you. We have a full schedule today, as well as possibly two public hearings. If you're registered to speak, or if you do register to speak to one of the zoning, one of the public hearings, we ask for the sake of the audio and visual component that you would come to the desk to speak, so that your voice is possible, so your voice can be captured. If you have questions about the public hearing or want to refer back to it at a later date, it will be uploaded to our website, so if you want to need to refer to it at a later point, just for clarity or for reference, you're welcome to do that. We have a couple housekeeping items to begin with. Agenda item number two.
I did.
Oh, we have an indication as item number one.
This is author on no one of this, but to start the meeting, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessing on our deliberations and on your and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is confirmation of the minutes from June 24th, 2019. All councilors who received a copy of those minutes. I would point out that there was one change to recognize, recognition of the Sager families. The only change being that we modified the language of the original minutes to recognize the counselor, Matic, recommended their recognition, not their, not of the Sager families, their induction to the Manitoba baseball thing, and not that he did not recommend them for induction. That's the only change that I'm aware of. So, agenda item number two, moved by counselor Gordon Matic and seconded by councilor Jim Hunt. Be resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of the council of the city of Morton, held on the 24th day of June 2019, be adopted, adopted and circulated, and that all statutory requirements have been fulfilled. Are there any objections or questions?
Just the spelling of Odney Sager is O-D-N-E-Y. Like, it's not, it's just Odney, O-D-N-E-Y.
That was changed to a subsequent minute.
Oh, okay.
And Wayne's name is admitted from that count.
Yeah, and that was also made in accordance.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Too many copies on the ground.
The copy of the minutes that we're approving are the ones that will be attached with your agenda this morning, and those have both been corrected in that, in that agenda. So, we will vote to adopt the minutes and circulate in favor, please. Indicate opposed, none, motion carries. All right. All right, moved by councilor Nancy Penner, seconded by councilor Jim Hunt. Be resolved that the council of the city of Morton agree to add the following amendments to the agenda. There are none. We do not need a motion. Agenda item number four, point two, moved by councilor Jim Hunt, seconded by councillor Gordon Matic. Be resolved that the regular meeting of council be closed to convenience of a public hearing for 19 BL 202, rezoning of 212 Sixth Street, and for variance order 02 2019, 212 Sixth Street. In favor, please indicate. Opposed, none, we are in a public hearing.
So, council thanks you for showing an interest in the hearing tonight, and the process will be as follows. Any presentations are limited to a maximum of 10 minutes. Hearings will be done in the order as they appear on the agenda. If anyone other than the applicant wants to make a presentation on any of the hearings, they must record their name and contact information with me prior to the hearing. What this means is if you don't give me your name in advance, you won't be permitted to speak. If you aren't sure, you can register with me and then decline to speak when your name is called. All presentations must be directed through the chair, which is the mayor. Council will first hear from the applicant. Council will then hear representations, beginning with those in favor, followed by those opposed or objecting. Applicant will have an opportunity to respond, and if new information is provided, the others will again have an opportunity to present. Council may ask for clarification after each presentation, but will not enter into debate. Minutes will be kept. Written submissions may be presented, but must be made available to those who are present who want a copy. When presentations are completed, council will close hearings, and further input from public will not be permitted for legal reasons. Council has the option to adjourn a hearing and advise of the next date for the continuation of the hearing to obtain further information. When council makes a decision, where required by legislation, all persons who made a presentation at the hearing will be notified. The following are the types of hearing. Zoning bylaw amendment. If council decides to give second reading to the bylaw, those who made objections at this public hearing will have an opportunity to file a second objection with the MFCW Planning District. So, if you want to have this opportunity, please make sure that you identify yourself as an objector. Conditional use, when, conditional use variation, or variation, when council makes its decision on the application, the decision is final and there is no appeal. So, if there's anyone that wants to speak today, or would like to register, you can do that now.
221 St. South 6 A. That's the last one. 1 and 9. And 8673. Do you have anything? Proponent oral points? Okay. Thank you. Hi there.
Are you bobbed?
Yes, you're both here, and I've got you as proponents opposed. Okay, you're good to go. You'll be first up. Thank you. And are you opposed to our proposal? And are you opposed to our floor?
Of course.
Thank you. Can I interrupt? And are you opposed to the other document? Is there anyone else that still needs to register? We'd like to.
So, the hearing this morning is to hear representation regarding zoning amendment 02 2019, as submitted by Glemberg Homes for 212 Sixth Street, being lots 3 and 4, block 14, Plan 863 MLTO in the city of Morton. This zoning amendment is to rezone this property from RT Residential Two Family District to RM-M Residential Multi-Family Medium District. The second hearing this morning is to hear representation regarding variation order 02-2019, as submitted by Glemberg Homes, for the same property for the necessary variances required under the proposed site plan and related zoning amendment. The proposals, as outlined in the notices of public hearing, were mailed as required by Section 169, Section 2, subsection 3 of the Planning Act, to the applicant and to the surrounding property owners of the affected property by regular mail. The administration office has not received any official representation either for or against the variation application before today.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the parts along my map here. First to speak today is the applicant, representing the applicant, Glemberg Homes, is Sandberg. We recognize Sandberg for 10 minutes. Is there a particular document that you needed?
Yes, probably the summary PDF. Looks like this.
Okay.
Want to present a paper copy as well for the council?
Sure, yeah.
All right, so, as was said, my name is Sandberg, and I represent Glemberg Homes in design of the complex. And the purpose of looking at a project like this, as we've done in some other communities as well, is to provide affordable ownership for single, unmarried, average income residents of Morton who may not be able to afford a single family home of their lives. It will give owners an opportunity to be in walking distance to main services, to be healthy and to be part of the community, and it will allow more people to live in and explore more of the beautiful developed areas. So, those are kind of the main goals that are set out for us in a project like this. So, when we start looking at properties that are available, whether in Lincoln or more narrow, really developed and whole areas, we're looking for locations within those cities, in this case, Morton, that can support medium density living, which also allows the burden of the cost of land to be shared. In land development and in building, what we've seen is a continuing rise in land values, and it becomes more and more difficult for families to afford their first family home. And so, it forces people to look at either rental, or it forces them to look at other opportunities in other communities, in other small, outlined communities. So, what we found is, as we've done projects like this with medium density, if we do it creatively and we do it tastefully, generally we find that the reception to it is very good, and the people that are living there get a very decent quality of living there. Some of the goals in that, as well as to minimize investment by utilizing existing infrastructure, so putting water and sewer in and new developments and that sort of thing has also been done more and more costly. So, that's why we started looking at more infill areas where there are larger properties, such as this, being a little wide lot, and already being zoned as some higher median density, or actually low density, I guess, but it's already not zoned for a single family only, and so we just look for opportunities to maximize that land. If we design and build creative structures, the people that are living there, they're taking ownership, have pride of ownership, and then they take care of the property. If we look at just building something very, very inexpensively as part of the look or the design of the building, it's not attractive for people to live there. It ends up attracting more, maybe landlords and rental property, as opposed to more ownership and having more pride of ownership and taking care of the properties. One of our goals, too, is to ask for reasonable, to reasonably maximize density, to minimize the purchase cost for new homeowners. As I mentioned before, obviously, as you increase more density, obviously, you reduce your overall investment for those homeowners. It just makes it easier for them to own. I attached some pictures. There's probably five or six photos in there of a project that we did in Linklar recently. We built it about a year and a half ago. That one was set up as a rental. So, this, for this example, this yard is 50 feet wide and it's 130 feet deep. And so, before this, there was a single resident sitting on this property, and if you just scroll through this, you can, like here, you can see the concrete approach to the backyard. And we tried to integrate it as well as possible within the community, trying to keep some curb appeal and some character to it, just trying to creatively design that. All right, well, there's a shot of the backyard. I know sometimes there's some concern about just setbacks, side yards, rear yards, that sort of thing. The goal of here is to minimize the backyard impact on other properties in the side yard by putting fencing around the building, or fencing around the yard. And the one side yard, of course, the left side yard, that is the tighter side yard that we requested, just to provide sidewalk down there, but as you get to open this, the majority of the activity would be along the dry side of it. I think that's, that's basically all I have to say about the project.
How many units did you have?
This is three units.
Three, those right toward the front?
These are middle. You had mentioned the project would be as common as usual.
Have you addressed drainage?
We addressed drainage.
Drainage for the one in Morton? Have you addressed if it goes ahead? What's your drainage would be like, that you're not knocking on to other people's property?
Yeah, that, I haven't actually looked at the exact elevation there, but drainage would be handled through the solvency driveway, that sort of thing, because there's, we would have that opportunity to pump in the parking area to direct that monstrosity out of the road. It's generally, generally easy to use.
Snow storage in the later time?
It would be removable, for the most part. What we've done in Linklar is, because there's six parking spots for three units, and here we also have a ratio of two to one ready, we would likely take two of the parking spots on Linklar that would be snow storage, but from time to time, it would need to be removed from, from the property with truck and trailer.
So, in this case here, you had mentioned there was three?
That's right.
So, one up, middle, and then basement.
That's right. From this picture, you can see the door at the back of the building, that's the access to the basement suite, and from the front, there's two doors in there. One of them brings you right onto the roof floor, and the other one brings you up to the second floor. So, there's no, there's no common area, no common spaces for people to, where you won't maintain hands, that sort of thing.
So, that'd be similar to your proposal for the Morton, one, one, like, I guess with three different?
That's right. There's also, I didn't find that file where there's a proposed project PDF.
Would the density be, I don't know if you've gotten this far, would the density of your proposal be higher or lesser than the one you did on Port Street in Linklar?
The density would be slightly higher. Yeah. Basically, the property is exactly, like, the design of the building is identical to what we did in Linklar, and very similar finishes, so you basically expect to see that three times just married together. So, there we observe the same sort of ratios for parking and that sort of thing. We have very close to a two to one ratio for parking. We think that there should be, at the parking lot, if you're going to put up something with density, you shouldn't expect people to park on the street.
How do you address people's mobility issues when you get steps in front of them?
We would be seeing this as, as younger family.
Younger family, yeah.
Single, you know, young married, maybe young family.
Sorry, now we're dealing with this zoning, right? So, you're wanting a zoning request, what is, R, S, M, F, it was?
R, M.
M, M, okay. Any other questions in council? City staff? Okay, do you have anything else? You have one minute left. You're fine? Okay. Thank you for attending and presenting. 9:21, one minute shy, it's 10 minutes. Next individual we will recognize is Mr. Bob Luger. Did I pronounce his name correctly?
Could we be questioned?
Sure, sure. So, Bob Luger and Catherine Luger. You want 10 minutes, or do you want your full 20 together?
I don't think we need much more than 10.
10?
10, sorry.
All right, and 9:22, Mr. and Mrs. Luger. I assume that's the correct relationship there.
Yes, yes, we're, we're married.
Just as I said, just as you said, I wasn't sure if it was siblings or cousins or something. All right, if we could get you just at the table, just for the sake of the microphone, that would be great. It's 9:22.
Mayor Burley, councilors, others of the city of Morton administration in attendance. We thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you about this proposal. We are speaking to rezoning application from RT Residential Two Family to RM Residential Multiple Family Medium, and the area in question is the lot at 212 Sixth Street. We also have, are speaking to the application for variance, the specific order number 02 2019. We are preparing, presenting this information on behalf of 53 area residents who have signed our accompanying letter. I have the original letter plus a couple of copies. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that we might have more appropriately given copies to all of you, so I'm sorry, but may I hand the letter in at the end of our presentation, so that it is, that can be accounted for? We want to give you feedback. We have, the following information summarizes the results of a door-to-door canvass, which we did to determine the reaction of area residents in the area of the 212 Sixth Street. We canvassed the block in question, the 200 block of Sixth Street. We talked to people on Thornhill Street, because they too are affected, and people on Seventh Street. We did not go to the co-op and have people fill in our petition, just, you know, based on general willingness to indicate concern or be negative of future development. These are people who are impacted by this change. We just want to make the point, because we haven't got a picture here of the development in question, but we are talking about what I call a two-story plus raised basement, and nine, I'm sorry, you do have the photo. Okay, it's a, it's a very large building, nine units. So, we, the entire block of Sixth Street is between Thornhill and Morton, plus the houses on Thornhill and houses on Seventh Street, which are joining the property in question, are comprised of single-family units, and the size of the proposed building that would be allowed by rezoning to this RM-M designation is inappropriate for the location, and it's most appropriate for the particular lot in question. Nine units on a 100-foot lot is rather ridiculous. Specifically, the proposed plan necessitates, because it is so large, it necessitates four variances, one variance per lot line, to squeeze it into the space available. Variance number one seeks to provide a 15-foot front yard instead of a 25-foot yard. The building will be closer to the street than any other home on the block, and is going to completely rule the front yard alignment currently in place along the block. Already taller than any other building on the block, the small yard in the proximity to the sidewalk will make the building even more overwhelming. Note two, that the size of these steps going up to double doors and up the height of the building protrude into that already smaller front yard allowance. That's a significant part of the front yard allowance that is further used up. Variance number two seeks to provide a four-foot side yard instead of a 10-foot side yard. This four-foot strip runs only along the south side of the front yard and building. That space parallels the backyard of two Thornhill homes. Their backyards are going to be pretty much overshadowed by this very large building that is four feet away.
If I can just interject, we actually have two public hearings, one about zoning, one about variance, so items pertaining to variance need to be presented in the variance hearing, so this is only about densities and only about zoning class. I know there's a, it seems to be a conflation and a marriage of the two. It's really difficult to consider one without the other, but if possible, as much as possible, we can keep this one to zoning specifically.
So, you get another chance to speak?
We do. You will get to reregister again, talk about zoning, or variance, sorry.
Okay, pardon my lack of knowledge.
It's semantics. No, it's semantics, but it's, yeah.
I will not carry on regarding the variance, so thank you for the interruption. In terms of density, I think that the following concerns we have are impacted by density. It's not about the property site plan per se. We have concerns about the traffic and additional on-street parking that is going to be caused by nine additional residential units. Sixth Street is a theater street to the north part of Morton, and that part of Morton, Sixth going north, is still an area under high development, so there's going to be more traffic used by people from Morton on Sixth Street. It's the first through street as you travel west of Thornhill that's already significantly busier than any other north-south road that crosses Thornhill. Furthermore, the proposed development is one lot from the corner of Sixth and Southern Streets. Additional vehicles from nine vehicles is going to cause a problem. Additional on-street parking with a peak traffic flow as parking on both sides of the street, particularly in winter, often cuts down the travel, the usable travel, and the two-way traffic. So, when you've got more parking that's going to be concealed on both sides of the street, right at the corner, you can have a lot of people coming off the highway or to the street. We have concerns about water runoff from the development.
We just want to make the point, because we haven't got a picture here of the development in question, what we are talking about, what I call a two-story plus raised basement and nine, I'm sorry, you do have, okay. It's a, it's a very large building, nine units. So we, the entire block of Sixth Street is between Thornhill and Morton, plus the houses on Thornhill and houses on Seventh Street, which are joining the property in question, are comprised of single-family units and the size of the proposed building that would be allowed by rezoning to this RM dash M designation is inappropriate for the location and is most appropriate for the particular lot in question. Nine units on a hundred-foot lot is rather ridiculous. Specifically, the proposed plan necessitates, because it is so large, it necessitates four variances, one variance per lot line to squeeze it into the space available. Variance number one seeks to provide a fifteen-foot front yard instead of a twenty-five-foot yard. The building will be closer to the street than any other home on the block and is going to completely rule the front yard alignment currently in place along the block. Already taller than any other building on the block, the small yard in the proximity to the sidewalk will make the building even more overwhelming. Note two, that the size of these steps going up to double doors and up the height of the building protrude into the already smaller front yard allowance. That's a significant part of the front yard allowance that is further used up. Variance number two seeks to provide a four-foot side yard instead of a ten-foot side yard. This four-foot strip runs only along the south side of the front yard and building. That space parallels the backyard of two Thornhill homes. Their backyards are going to be pretty much overshadowed by this very large building that is four feet away.
If I can just interject, we actually have two public hearings, one about zoning, one about variance. So items pertaining to variance need to be presented in the variance hearing. So this is only about densities and only about zoning class. Um, I know there, there's a, it seems to be a conflation and a marriage of the two. Um, it's really difficult to consider one without the other, but if possible, as much as possible, we can keep this one to zoning specifically.
So you get another chance to speak?
We do. You will get to re-register again and talk about zoning, or variance, sorry.
Okay. Pardon my lack of knowledge.
It's semantics. No, it's semantics, but it's, yeah.
But, I will not carry on regarding the variance. It's a, making an interruption. Uh, in terms of density, I think that the following concerns we have are impacted by density. It's not about the property site plan per se. We, uh, we have concerns about the traffic and additional on-street parking that is going to be caused by nine additional residential units. Sixth Street is a theater street to the north part of Morton, and that part of Morton, Sixth going north, is still an area under high development. So there's going to be more traffic here, but people are more on Sixth Street. It's the first through street as you travel west of Thornhill that's already significantly busier than any other north-south road that crosses Thornhill. Furthermore, the proposed development is one lot from the corner of Sixth and final Streets. Additional vehicles from the development will add to the existing traffic congestion at stop sign. This is a very real issue at peak traffic times. You can go through Down Sixth Street at a quiet Sunday afternoon and it's no busier than the other street, but there are peak times that create issues. And we feel that at the rising sign, uh, stop sign right at the corner of Sixth and Thornhill, there is an issue and additional, the nine, vehicles from nine vehicles is going to cause a problem. Additional on-street parking with a peak traffic flow as parking on both sides of the street, particularly in winter, often cuts down the travel, the usable travel and the two-one lane traffic. So we've got more parking that's going to be concealed on both sides of the street right at the corner. You can have a water leak from people coming off the highway onto the street. We have concerns about water runoff from the development, given its size and density. The building, parking lot, driveway are going to cover most of the property. This will not allow for any kind of natural absorption during heavy rainfalls or it could be melting snow. In such instances, neighbors may well get additional runoff onto their properties and this is, we feel, pretty unacceptable. Additionally, much water will flow to Sixth Street, down Sixth Street to Wardrobe. And we have long-term residents in the area who have spoken of overwhelming the heavy running runoff water, overwhelming the city's aging infrastructure and causing sewer backups on Sixth Street because of water, rainwater that gets down and inches sewers on, especially on Wardrobe. We have concerns about the ladder play areas for children. There's zero space in the proposal for children to play. The nearest designated playgrounds are several blocks away. So for people investing in this property deemed to be for young families, there's no play area, or it's not exactly appropriate to them. We have concerns about trees, which may seem a little esoteric, except part of the neighborhood that we chose to live in, all of us. A positive feature of this area is the number of magnificent mature trees on the boulevards and in the yards. The properties adjacent to the proposed development are a case in point. Several trees on the property to the north will probably have to be removed or simply cut back in order to allow for narrow driveway. We have two concerns about property values. Doesn't everybody who's made an investment in property, anyone? Concerns already raised about rezoning cause us to conclude that if approved and acted upon, they're going to lead to a reduction in our property values. We have a street that is comprised of single-family homes now, older homes, some of them, but are pretty darn well-maintained homes. Most of them are very well-paved floors. We've got gardens, we've got people with kids, we've got people who care about the neighborhood they've chosen. And we ask as how we know the property value will probably be impacted negatively? We ask ourselves whether we would have made the choice to bother what we did, had such a building as the one proposed, then the assistance? Would any of it? You know, having a multi-family dwelling is an impediment to choice for residential families, given the amount of extra traffic, the overall overwhelming sense of the size of the building. So I will conclude and ask a lot of you, please make our conclusion for this presentation.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, good morning. In conclusion, pardon me, we have looked forward to development of this property. We knew that something was going to happen before we bought. We've only been in Morton for a little over a year and look forward to our retirement here. Pretty obvious, I guess that's where we are in our lives. And, uh, and so, uh, the, the current rezoning, uh, we believe well varies because you don't want to talk about that right now. Uh, the current rezoning application proposed something that is hugely disproportionate to the size of the lot and to surrounding homes. And really, this building will fill up virtually all of the space from the north side to the south side of the property, but for four feet on one side and sixteen-foot driveway, which is already downsized on the other. In fact, we wonder if this obviously difficult proposal is a tactic to elicit eventual approval for something scaled down. I guess we can't help but wonder that. That makes sense. We believe that the current zoning should be maintained. Zone RT residential two family already allows an increase from the previous single residence on the property. And we've wanted to help with that property for years and years, and RP allows, uh, for four families. That's a four-hundred percent increase on a residential lot, a pretty small piece of property. The number of units allowed would fit better on the lot than both the building and the site plan would be more than keeping with the neighborhood. We hope the City of Morton will not allow indiscriminate development in the name of higher density housing. We understand the need for more housing. We get it, we understand. That's reasonable, but not, not here on such a small place. This would be in front of your homeowners who have purchased properties believing the character of safety and enjoyment of their locations would be safe from rampant redevelopment. Rezoning two-one-twelve Sixth Street would generally violate the spirit and the gracious nature of the neighborhood. RP is the appropriate zoning classification. And we ask, please, members of the council, if you don't change that, we're keen upon it the way it is.
Thank you. Uh, one thing we don't have right is the address. Please, please. That's, that's the address in question? So if you could provide your mailing address to...
Oh, sure, of course.
...to the address after, that'd be appreciated. Uh, now, would you be willing to field questions for council? Uh, the, the public hearing allows opponents or proponents to be questioned by council if they wish. Um, councilors, feel free to ask questions of Mr. and Mrs. Luger. Mike, I have a couple of questions. Uh, how, how proximate are you to the, to the park slip question?
It's across the street from us, street, okay? And just slightly, uh, over a bit.
Kidney corner.
But it's, yes.
Okay.
Yes. The developer probably do it straight past.
I presume you're to the north, if I was to be on board, yeah? Okay.
Just, um, I'm running, our councilor, our mayor, Mayor Burley, the water runoff on Sixth Street, is that not going into a storm, sir? But is same going to, does that make sense? I mean, could, uh, is that right, that we wouldn't have the water going into a storm, sir, on Sixth Street?
Uh, well, I'm not, I'm not specifically involved here in how it's handled at this location, but generally speaking, heavy rainfall, uh, or snow melt situations, even if we have a pipeline, rain sewer, there are circumstances where it'll overwhelm it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the general flow here would be towards Wardrobe.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if there were no storms or if we could capture that water? The playground's valid, and I think, the playground, uh, I think very similar to the development that Mr. Berg stood beside the United Church. I mean, there's, there's a little space for a playground at that location too, but I think the thought of council at the time was, you know, there's the park to the north and there's the park, the skating rink and the green space at the courthouse, and then also this, the playground at the school. So those were the two areas that we need to accommodate that, so. And trees are, are they on this property?
They are, no, they are a property.
So they wouldn't have to come out, though, they wouldn't?
There are some trees that would have to go.
Would there?
Clearly there are two beautiful big trees that would have to go, um, on the south side of the, of lots that we're talking about. The trees on the north that belong to the Bursen family, they'd have to be shaved and trimmed and really cut back so that garden structure's another, they lie on this rather narrow driveway.
Okay.
But on the, on the south side, sure, there are trees that would, people would have to go.
Okay, maybe we'll let the developer speak to that after. Yeah, I know, property values, I mean, that's always a question, right? Is they, you know, do the values go up or do they go down? And I'm not sure what the, if that's a proven factor, that's when there's multiple family units on the street, if that value's increasing. I think it was councillor Hunt that mentioned that, I mean, north on Sixth Street, the value of a property there hasn't changed, even though there's multi-family dwellings on the west side of Sixth Street, right?
That's right, but it's a little bit different, the fact that there is setbacks and, and there is space on, on the south side and the west side. The one in question is, uh, that we're talking about here is, in the three-hundred block on the west side of the street, there's those multi-family units. And there has been sales in the past, I'm talking years ago, that doesn't seem to affect the value for, for that type of, of spot, but where you're talking about and how, how it is situated on there, where most of the buildings is, is all right there, you know, we don't know.
And those are rentals, right, in mystery ownership? So there's always a difference.
Yeah, and usually rentals isn't, they don't keep things up quite the same as ownership.
Private ownership, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, and I don't have any other questions, so you're the developer after. Sure. You guys other oppositions?
Speaking to the value component, um, I know I can't speak to it. Um, I, I'm a real estate appraiser, Jim Hunt, two, and, um, so it's, it's certainly a consideration, um, that we talked about, in terms of value. One of the things that I think that, speaking professionally, just as an anecdotally, that a lot of it has to do with how it is done, as much as, as what is done. And that is, that is something that we want to be very careful, in terms of the, because when you're talking about a, a development, you don't do a second chance in the next seventy years to do, redo it, usually, right? Because once the highest and best use is achieved, you know, it's going to take a long time for it to become financially possible to remove that usage and apply something different to the works also. Any other questions for, for opponents? We thank you for your time. It's nine forty-two. We did questions and presentation in here, a lot of twenty minutes, so we thank you. And I apologize for stopping you. Uh, I should clarify, so now that there are potentially two public hearings, one about zoning and one about variance, that was my bad, that was on me, but just in order to keep everything together, in case our friends that need simple relations watch our video later, we just want to make sure it was done right away. So thank you for presenting.
May I ask, Mr. Mayor, when will it be here and be, does it follow today?
Right after, yes.
Right away?
And you'll have a chance to register again to, to speak to variations.
Thank you, okay. Do you wish to have a copy of this letter?
Yes, that would be great.
Two copies plus the original.
To manage it directly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have, uh, Mr. Brian Miniker, uh, who's presenting for ten minutes.
I'll be, I'll be quick, two minutes. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak to this side of it. Um, I'm going to speak, not in favor of the, the zoning. First of all, I'm delighted that Mr. Sandberg would bring his expertise in tasteful development to Morton. He's a builder of some good repute. And so I'm delighted to see here. I'm also delighted to agree with the concept of multi-family units in the midst of single-family dwellings. I think that's good. Uh, it's the economy of scale in this zoning that I disagree with. I can speak to, uh, anecdotally to the flooding issue. It ends up in my neighbor's yard, John Cosson, and mine, so it does drain north, even if it's said that the lighter in the street drains south, it ends up in my yard, and it does flow to the north. The other thing that's important is the trees, and I think before any development happens on that lot, that our tree manager person would come and assess the possible damages to the trees, like he did for the United Church, church one. Uh, the United Church development is a different one. There are no direct properties that impinge upon it. There are no adjacent lots in the United Church, and I would also recognize that Mr. Berg, um, his first development proposal did not go through because of the neighbors that were disenchanted with it, and so I think there was a two-year hiatus and redevelopment plan before that one is allowed to go through. Uh, I didn't realize that the zoning designations, designations had changed, that they're now six or seven. Uh, I think what I would be in favor of would be four family units on that lot. I think that's tasteful, and I think it also fits the neighborhood. Trees, drainage, I think that's my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Miniker?
Are you saying right now the water actually from these lots moving?
That's right.
Up into your yard, there's no drainage away from there?
No.
Onto the street?
No, it pools right, right by the telephone, um, the little green box that's there that supplies, you know, the cable to this.
Yes. In your backyard?
Uh, right, kind of in this northeast corner. And the rain that was about ten days ago left about a foot of water from my neighbor's garden for a day or two. I thought about drilling a well.
That lot always has been low, even when that single-family house was on there. I remember.
Yeah, but it does rain now, past rain is, uh, past mine and right on to John's garden.
Yeah.
John Bosson is to the northeast or the south?
Yeah.
To the northeast.
Yeah, he, he got married on the weekend, so he's, can't be here. So drainage is a really important issue, and trees are also really important. And they're not accounted for in this zoning.
The one you talked about on the highway, like by the United Church, that's the one where, where they gave frontage, just frontage for the big trees, and forced it back to homeless to the back end.
I can remember speaking to Mr. Berg about the trees, and he took some scapacious construction to, to deal with that. But I think if our tree specialist would look at the trees on the yard and say, gee, if you do this and this to this particular lot, what are the chances that they'll be derelict or killed within a couple of years? It'd be important to deal with it before or after, pretty tricky.
Yeah. There is a tree protection plan that we currently have in place, so, correct? That probably is just for boulevard trees or not?
Yeah, it won't be private property.
Private trees, right?
Kind of the private ones around the computer, it's just...
Right, just boulevard.
It is.
And to be quite honest, even if this is a, a single-family resident, you have the right on your property line to trim those trees straight up if they're hanging over in your property line, so.
Yeah.
That's one.
Yeah, I'm sure the roots go well under the property, come under the old tree that's there. Gorgeous.
Now, I think the private property tree situation is, of course, is a concern.
There's a point, however, where private contract law, private responsibility overs, is overstepped by municipal regulation.
Sure.
Um, and if you're trying to find the balance there, of course, is a, is, is significant concern. For instance, uh, if, if the owner of two-twenty decided to cut those trees down tomorrow, you would have no recourse, right? That's, that's the way private, uh, private law works. But again, we would hope that the developer would wish to continue to seek, regardless of the density, regardless of the usage, would, would act in good faith with that, but of course, once you get to a certain point, um, things could be affected, at which point there's civil law, right? If there's damages, if there's data that we cannot speak to, we don't have the right to, to, to speak to civil matters. But it would be, it would be interesting to get a report and analysis, um, from the mayor of Burton, perhaps, and see what the, what the effect is of any potential usage. And I think that would fortify the case that the developer would make, um, with respect to development.
So we pay the due cost for it.
Is that?
So we pay the due cost for it. So we pay the due cost for it.
That's right, yeah. Any other questions from council?
No.
Thank you for your time. It's nine fifty. Our next representation is from Mr. James Weave, that's ten minutes.
I guess I'll work on the variances, which we'll get to. But as opposed to the, from RT to residential multifamily, I believe that if we're going to change one lot, we change the whole lot, so that the value is there for the next person telling it. Because if this person is allowed nine lots, nine units on this property, and I'm only allowed two suites on my property, where's the value in my sale if I set a site sale in ten, twenty years? Whereas if we can tell the developer, you bought three lots, and now you have something to produce a larger product for. Comparing this with what's happening in 300 block there, by the foreheads, I think that's apples and eggs. Because there's green space around there, there's a large property there, as opposed to a small property there. There's driveway, there's setback. I live, I drive past that place, but mailbox is not too far from that place. It's a nice setup. This is putting a very large structure in a very small lot.
Would you be willing to take questions from council? Yes? All right, any questions for Mr. Weave?
Interesting concept of changing the entire block, but where do we just stop? From the east to the west or north to the south? Like, I think what happens is when people purchase lots, I mean, when they're available, I don't know how big your property is if you live on them, but they have to come up with a plan, and that's why you have hearings, so people can come and voice their concerns and objections or be in favor of. But to take them, we have rezoned, okay, it's just B single family, and they got rezoned to an RT, which is multifamily. That was then, I'm not sure how long ago, but I believe most of our community is multifamily dwelling right now. And, but to move it forward beyond that, it'd be courageous, I think.
I'm not for it, I'm just saying, if you're going to do something, then do the neighbor's arteries, so that they have a sound wire.
Right, it's not your property is, is if you have a, your property?
He's RT.
Your RT, but where are you in relationship to this property?
Just north. I'm at two thirty each.
Two thirty and four.
Not, yeah. Five properties north. In appraisal theory, in economic value, the land value theory, you do raise a very good point that when those zoning classes change wholesale, the value to the property is increased. But we've cleared that between First Street and Fourth Street. I know I shouldn't bring it up here, but as soon as they did that, the property values in that region all doubled just on land value, to the point where one that was fairly larger than yours sold in combination, just landed for three hundred thousand a parcel. So that does have a very significant effect. But the question then would be, where do you stop and where do you start? And what are you going to designate as high-density multifamily? Obviously, having it in proximity to your retail and your services makes a lot of sense, but it requires a bigger, to do that, it is a wholesale thing, has to have a bigger level of coordination. We are working on a master development plan, which will identify areas of interest, and of course, before that gets adopted, it will go to circulation and everything like that. So it is a very good point you raise about the effect of value, and it's no different for any individual parcel that gets rezoned, right? The value prospect changes for the parcel question, there is no doubt about that. Of course, value combination as well. If you were to acquire, say, a property north or south of you, or behind you, you'd have a big enough parcel to start looking at multifamily dwellings and the value prospect changes. There is the possibility that, you know, dependent on the aspirations of any given developer, that the 100, the 200 blocks, there are good candidate properties for redevelopment. But in order to do it as a wholesale thing, it would require some thorough input from our city planner and a master development plan.
Just for the record, I agree with you, as far as the one to the north is totally different from the other, kind of had mentioned in that book, but, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Weave? Very none. All right, thank you for your time. It's nine fifty-six. Next presentation is from Mr. Kenberg. Kenberg, when will be you, will be you starting at nine fifty-seven, since sorry, fifty-six?
Are you ready in council? Thank you for the opportunity to, the rest of this hearing to express my concerns. As a lifelong resident of this great community in Washington Grove, with growth comes change. And with good zoning, our growing community grows and changes in an orderly manner. From my perspective, the majority of modern residents have benefited, enjoyed, and enjoy good land use planning. Residents purchase properties and tenants rent properties with the anticipation that they'll be able to enjoy the full benefits that property, that properly planned zoning provides. People purchase their first homes, families live and safely raise their children in these homes. People retire in these homes. Proper zoning is a big step in providing a positive environment to allow this to happen, and this then becomes what we refer to as community. I believe the word community has a powerful meaning in all of us. If zoning is allowed to be changed in a residential area, that can affect the neighborhood in a negative way. The security of being able to enjoy one's property as anticipated by present zoning is destroyed. Then all modern residents need to be aware that their properties may not have that security. This can then have long-term effects on livestock, safety, property values, and the level of how attractive Morton is for potential residents.
Any questions for Mr. Burkin?
I concur with your statement that proper zoning is required, and zoning can change, and there's an application before us for zoning to change in an RT zoning area, and that's where we get the privilege of having people make representation, and that's where we hear their concerns and also their, with regards to zoning, and I agree, there needs to be a form of security. So if you're purchasing, you want to be able to be confident that, you know, your community or area could stay as constant. But again, that's the reason that we, and there's been a request to rezonate piece of property that we have here, so that people can speak. You have a property nearby?
Yeah, we have a property across the street, right near the corner, which is north of yours.
Okay. Okay.
I don't have any questions of Mr. Burkin. Any other questions, Mr. Burkin? Okay, that's three minutes. Thank you. Enough of the time, it'll take all the time, well, up to ten minutes. All right, next to speak is Connie Yanra, yeah, took me a minute, but just my eyes there. It's ten o'clock.
I only hear this, on 375 Cornell Street. The traffic, we don't, facing the highway, there's tons of traffic, we need that, we want to work fine with the traffic. We're backyard, we face this building. Personally, I just want, do not want to look at a big, ugly building taking up the whole lot all the time. I don't want that noise back there, I don't want those people back there. I want my next little private backyard, that's all.
All right, ten o'clock. Phil, ten oh one, final presentation is Marina Payet, is that correct?
Yeah.
Payet, sorry. I don't know French, my kids do, and I always try to butcher the pronunciation.
He starts, he starts as a gentleman.
Oh, very good. Morning or afternoon?
Yeah.
Likewise.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I'm going into class this fall.
Okay, so I've just, I'm not okay with this. I have a four-year-old son, he will not be allowed to play outside, he will not be able to enjoy our backyard, because who knows who's living in those apartments next to us? This is so unfair. I've lived in my house for seven years, and if I were to try to sell it now, I'd get nowhere. Nobody wants to live beside this. It's just, we're going from having kids playing everywhere, and I'm sure the neighbors on the other side agree, because they have kids that are similar in age. It's just, this is not what I bought into seven years ago. Like, I have that same size lot, and my house and my garage gives me the perfect amount of space to have a nice yard, a nice garden, which both Brian and I enjoy, and they want to park their dumpsters right beside it? Like, no, that's not okay. We're going from being in a safe place to an unsafe place because those people can't have criminal record checks. What if there's somebody that has, how would you feel, Brandon, if you're in my place with your kids? Because who knows who's going to live there? So it just, it bothers me, and if it was like a couple places, like maybe a duplex or a fourplex even, I'd be okay with it. But now, I want to sell my house and move so that I don't have to deal with this, but I can't, because nobody's going to buy it. Like, I talk to my dad, and my dad's like, there's no point, because you have to tell the people what's happening beside you, and nobody's going to want it. So now here I am with the house that won't sell. And I'm stuck, my son has stuff with us. He can't ride a bike down the street, he can't play, like, their driveway is attached to my yard. And who wants it?
Just stay there for a second, Marina, like, your property is to the north of this?
I'm to twenty.
So she's the trees.
I'm in the trees, and I have the same size lot, the exact same size.
So you're on the, what side?
I'm on the north side.
North side, north side.
North side, right.
Okay, there. I don't know where you're at. Oh, okay, then I see.
We're the only two lots in that whole entire block that are that size, the only two. And I bought it, I bought my house seven years ago because I wanted to never have to move, and if this happens, I will leave Morton, and I will never come back. And my son's going to have to suffer because he's going to start school here, and he's not going to be able to finish it, because I don't want to live next door to that.
You okay taking questions?
Yeah.
Okay. With regard to neighbors, being a condo title, does that provide any relief in terms of?
No, not right, because the bank, when you open an mortgage, the bank doesn't give you a criminal record check.
No.
Like, right now, with the single-family homes that are beside us, I know my neighbors, I know things around, I know every person that is around my house, and I know every person that is going to come in contact with him. They have nothing to hide. But now we're going to put thirty-some people in a condo building, and we don't know where they've come from, we don't know what they've gone through, we don't know if they're math heads, we don't, we don't know any of that, and that's a danger to my son. And to my neighbor's kids as well.
Yeah.
To all of us.
Sure. Just speak to, in fairness, there really is nothing, like, I won't use a specific address, but we lived in a, previously in a very nice area, and our neighbors were taken down for a compass to murder, right? So that is one of those things you can never get around, because you cannot do a criminal check, whether it's multifamily or single-family, you can't criminal check your neighbors.
But it is a little bit different, because it's now thirty people versus, you know, one.
It has the effect of less personality, less interaction, for sure, because there's no backyard, right?
And these kids, where are they going to play? They have no yard, they have a concrete, the whole backyard is concrete because it's a parking spot. They're going to come, and they're going to play on my yard or they're going to play on Jesse's yard? And they've got no place to go, like, the closest park is two and a half blocks, unless they go play where those other condos are just down the street, like one block over. So, I mean, and I feel bad for those kids, like, what kind of family, like, what kind of living is that? Because you can't barbecue, you've got no space to play outside, like, what kind of, who wants that kind of life? No green space at all, nothing.
Any questions from council, from Marina?
Well, you say it'd be good with a duplex or a fourplex, what's the difference?
Well, I can get to know those people, there's not such a large amount, it's a smaller building on the lot. Because right now, the building is just so big, it's taking up the whole lot, at least if it was a duplex or a fourplex, they would have some green space, they'd have a yard, they'd have a better light, because, I mean, they could barbecue in their backyard, and like, that's six or eight people to get to know versus thirty-some. Plus the parking, like, now, we have all these people, right? They're going to want to have friends over to their house. Well, all these people are going to park in front of my yard, and let me tell you, Corn and Apple is crazy, I can hardly get out of my driveway, for real, like.
Oh.
It's real, like, they literally, I have to call the tow truck on people because they park in front of my yard. Well, what's going to happen with these guys? It's going to be like, well, it's not going to be that bad, but it's still, our street is already so busy.
Given the Corn and Apple, I've been trying to buy a house in 100 block, because I want to be closer to Corn and Apple, so I don't have to park in front of your house.
Right, so how?
I know.
It is so, like, I'm so far away already, I don't have any of my windows open, I can hear everything that's happening. I don't even have to go, I can just hear it all from inside the house. In the air conditioning.
Yeah. All right. Does that, any questions for Marina? Thank you very much. Ten oh eight. All right. We, let's see. Number six on the agenda is the opportunity for applicants to respond to concerns. Did you wish to respond to concerns?
Yeah, just do you?
Sure, okay. It is ten oh nine, we'll recognize Mr. Berg for ten minutes.
I just want to say, first of all, thank you to those who showed up this morning to talk about your concerns about the community. Very often, when a developer starts anticipating this type of development, they ultimately give you that information ahead of time, just to try to work through those concerns. But this is the system, it's a process, so I get it in place, and I guess we'll follow it first. Some of the comments about the trees, as was mentioned here as well, our project on 375 Cornell, we've gone quite a few extra miles to make sure that those trees are protected. are protected, we work very closely with, with Martin Sanders and with Sean Diaz, to make sure that everything is, you know, we've been trying very, very hard to protect the trees that are there. We value those, not only for the community, but also for our development, because we do value those. We actually have a gentleman on our staff, he's only with us another week yet, but he's, he's actually a registered arborist, and he helped us a lot with that project as well. When initially placing the property, we went to the site to take a look at it, and he said, "We have concerns here, we should be twenty-five feet off of this corner, a lot fifteen feet." And so that's, you know, some of those conversations, so again, we've done the same thing here at 212 Sixth Street, we looked at this property to, to try to position this property in such a way that it will have minimal impact on the trees that are there. I won't say that there will be zero impact, because I think any time that you go into an existing area, trees have very, very long roots, they go a long distance, and we often don't know how it affects the trees until many years later. By the time it affects trees, we often don't even know what the cause of the issue was. So I won't deny that there will be some impacted trees that we have positioned the property and decided in such a way that it'll have minimal impact on what's there, there will be some bringing required. There was a conversation about number of variations, as a common word, the number of variations to, in order to accomplish a building this size, and while I agree, there are a lot of variations on there. Our, our goal with that was to anticipate keeping as much of the parking off of the streets as possible, and that's why we maximized the size of the parking lot. The bylaws for, for minimum, for parking spots for these number units is substantially less than what we're proposing. We could, we could add green space to this property by minimizing parking, if, if that was, you know, absolutely necessary. We saw that keeping the parking off of the street would be a goal that we had, and that's why we tried to maximize the parking space on the lot. There was a speculation that perhaps this application was a tactic to gain approval on a smaller version of the same project. I'd like to say that that's not the case, because when we looked at this project, we actually designed this building, sometimes wrote for a lot exactly the size in mind for other communities. It's not to say that every community handles things exactly the same, but we do know that based on the other project that we did on, on Fourth Street, we're in negotiation with someone else that can get it right now, on exactly the same side of the law of this, and, so that's why we felt it was reasonable to ask for this here, because we, we felt that that's common among the communities. Like I said, it doesn't mean that it's, it's right for this one. Again, just speaking with parking, we're starting to build parking space at almost two parking spots per unit. As soon as we, we feel that there's gonna be a lot of singles or young couples that are living here, the amount of impact on vehicles, maybe for visitors, may, may affect the street, but otherwise, the majority of the parking should be, will be handled right on the property itself. As far as drainage, drainage is always an issue in, in any development, even, even in new developments, it seems to be a concern. It's always difficult to get things going all right, but you have to make sure that your civil engineers and inspectors are, are well on the market, are measuring, and making sure that things are done properly. We do feel the parking area, because it is concrete, can be spilt and, and designed in such a way that that, that drainage will not have an impact. But I cannot speak to how that will affect storm, storms, drains, that sort of thing. There's some comments about the density, and, you know, would it be a little, a smaller density? We believe that that goes against what the intention of the project is, you know, could we, could we build something smaller with lesser units? Yes. But the intention of this is to provide a property where, like I say, singles or young couples where the finances are maybe not in place there yet to, to afford to live in a single-family dwelling, where they have the extra burden of the land and all the building possible, a single building. We feel that it just, it, it makes more sense to try to maximize the, the density and to minimize the land investment cost. I appreciate the fact that the quality of living is, is very important, it is for, for me, my family, as I'm sure it is everybody in the room. At the same time, there are those that can't afford the same quality of living that we afford. When I bought my first house, when I was first married, I bought it for fifty thousand dollars, and it was sixty by two hundred and fifty foot high, and a whole lot. Now, you can't buy a piece of land, you have to spend twice that just to find a piece of land. And while wages and, and income has increased somewhat, it certainly doesn't support a, a young couple with average incomes to be able to afford to, to have same family. That's it.
Any questions for both the response, for council? You spoke of, kind of a, a vision for that site, or, or scope of the project. What drove that scope? What, what was the, what was the driving force behind that specifically for that location?
Well, I look at the location that pops into your bag, is to the schools, and the parks, and the community services. Just as we, when we purchased the property at 275 Thornhill, the goal was is probably provide a quality of living for people in the community, like, obviously it changes for those around somewhat, but it does provide more opportunity for more people to enjoy being in the core of Morton. And so the idea that people have access to the restaurants, to the banks, to the shopping, to schools, you know, the schools are on, the majority of the education is on the north side of the highway, so walking access, if, if there are any children living in that building, is good for them. And I don't know the main factor to looking at that entire property is because of size, because if you find a lot that's a hundred feet wide, that's typically in today's, in today's real state, with a hundred feet wide, it's not very common for a single-family home anymore. That type of property usually is, is bad for, for a hundred units. Higher density obviously means that the payment cost per unit is lower, and it becomes more affordable for those that don't like to get into the car.
All right, any other questions, council? Speaking on behalf, speaking of the project or the application for the city, would you be prepared to present to it, Mr. Sanders?
Of course.
All right, our city planner, Martin Sanders, has provided us some preliminary information at the last committee of the hall, and we would be interested in his response into the application.
Sure. So for the record, I'm Martin Sanders, I work for the city in Morton, in the planning engineering department. I guess, you know, if you guys have specific questions, I'd be happy to, to respond to them, but generally speaking, I think it's well understood, this is a hundred by a hundred and twenty-five foot property. And so recently, we've developed a single-family dwelling. The development rights under the RT zoning part of this property established without council approval for developing this. And about two years ago, council introduced some new multifamily districts, so we could look at more nuanced situations like this. Generally speaking, our former single multifamily district directed developments of this nature towards Thornhill, downtown, Mountain Street, some of our higher-order roadways, where we expect to see more traffic, where we expect to want to maximize the opportunity for development, where the development has little or significant, if not no, impact on adjacent properties. This property isn't on a higher-order street, it's not on a corner of a, of a minor street, it's set within the residential neighborhood. In my world, in the city planning world, this would be known as a transitional site. We have to be very careful in introducing density into a site like this, to make sure that we're looking both at the current context, which is what well-spoken community members identify, this is a lower-density neighborhood, although the zoning is RT for most of the properties, most of the properties are developed with single-family. So even if you go to the four units, that would be, that would be a big change for people to adjust to. To go to the ten units, it would be allowed under the RMZ zoning, that is the residential median, that would be a significant jump, and we typically apply that to a transitional site. We also have to look in the future as to what we expect development to occur. That's kind of the nature of the work that I do. Although we have a single-family houses to the south of the five Thornhill Street, we can anticipate in the next year, ten years, twenty years, we're going to see more intensive development come forward, just as we've seen further down the street. It's not out there right now, but down by the United Church, the development that's been referred to as the same developer bill. So we can anticipate seeing that. So if that occurs, what happens to this site, the site in question tonight, 212 Sixth Street, this morning, pardon me, is that will suffer the effects of the higher development. So we would want to step down the development. We would consider this site to be distinct compared to the sites further north on, on Sixth Street, this block of Sixth Street. So to entertain some higher-density development in the four units, we can do that under the lower multifamily zoning category, that's the RMZ, so residential multifamily small. The maximum on that site under that is only, based on the size of this site, would be seven dwelling units. In the form that's being published as stack townhouse form, we can anticipate seeing two of those rather than three stacked units, so more likely we'll see six dwelling units on this site, which would then result in not nearly as much of a site being taken out, not just by the building, but also by the parking area, traffic access, and the location of amenities such as the, the ways for services and so on. So the fit on this particular site of this location in that lower multifamily district better suits the administration's opinion. This particular site and a development will actually be considered the current and the future development context.
All right, may I ask a question on the previous zoning, which was residential multifamily? This property without coming to here would have been able to accommodate six units? Is that what your question is?
Yeah, this property has been zoned RT for as long as I can recall, but the only category we have beyond that, the old zoning bylaw that was replaced two years ago, would have been RM, and that would have maxed out at six dwellings on this site.
Okay, but then it wouldn't, if there were, if this developer wanted to come in and, build a six-unit building on this site, they would not come to it here?
No, he would have had to, because there's no one previously, it's always RT.
Okay, no, I hear you, no, just asking, pardon. Okay, so then, and the RT, then you would have had, just that's, the, the, the very first zoning that was on that property. Like, I'm speaking to the person that would have bought seven years ago, what kind of zoning would have been on that property then?
Yeah, it would have been RT seven years ago, but the zoning bylaw that was replaced was inactive in two thousand and nine, so at that period of time, that property's been zoned RT.
Okay. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm, didn't comprehend you in this properly. The original zoning was RT, or it got changed to RT?
It was and remaining RT.
Okay, and RT would have required how many units?
You would have been able to, I think in the previous zoning bylaw, the minimum lot with the seven-five feet, so with this law, you probably would have been able to do just two units without the barriers.
Two units, oh, okay, so the RT is two units, the RM is six units, and the RMZ is seven units.
Under our current zoning bylaw, then, RT maxes out at four units. That's on the basis of the minimum lot size. And so if you were to go to the RMZ, that steps up the zoning a little bit, so you'd be allowed a maximum of seven dwellings on this site, based on its lot size.
Okay, maybe I'm just, I was picking up on your analysis, and I think it's on page nine for the, for council, says for the record, under the previous zoning bylaw, RM, residential multifamily district, the maximum density possible on this site would have been six dwelling units.
Yes, what I meant by that, council, was the highest yield on this site subject to the zone, then, would have been six. So it's being requested here today, which would not, you guys would not have been able to accommodate more than six dwellings on this site previously.
Okay.
The distinction you draw, or you, you make with the high-order streets and transitional sites, the, the distinction between the project at, beside the United Church, is that that's on high-order street being Nelson, correct?
Actually, I'm referring mostly in that case to being adjacent to Thornhill.
Okay.
Which, as we all know, is a provincial trunk highway. In city terms, would be considered arterial street, so we'd expect to see significantly more traffic along that type of road than we would along secondary or tertiary roads such as, such as Sixth Street.
Does, in your opinion, does the proximity of this parcel to Thornhill change any of that, considering we probably don't want more driveways bumping up them?
Yeah, I think a little bit, Mayor Burley, and that's, that's why I refer to it as a transitional site. You're, you're trying to fit in slightly more density, which would increase slightly more traffic, the closer you are to the high-end of the street. If this proposal had come forward, say, half a lot further to the north, there'd be no basis to recommend a rezon at that location to this intensity.
So right now, they can have four?
That's true, council.
See, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking of the Ninth Street, I'm familiar with that, because our daughter lived down there in two hundred block, and there was a, a side-by-side built there on a normal-sized lot. So I think it looks quite good, but I, I'm just wondering about, there was probably gonna be concerns in that spot for trees and some of the other things that we've been hearing today. And so this is a bit unique in the fact that the same person owns both lots, and maybe, maybe somehow the design could be such that it's put more in the center of the property than maybe more on, on the outsides. You know, that's kind of just where I'm coming from, because if, if we had two people, two separate people owning those lots, one could put a, a side-by-side on it, and the other one could do the same thing, we wouldn't have anything that we could do with it, but a lot of the concerns would be the same idea, except for the amount of people living there, correct? Like, a lot of our side yards and different things, like, it would, it would change somewhat, because you have to have four feet wider or five feet, right, from the property?
Yeah, yeah, you, I think I see where you're going, council. Clearly, depending on the form of development, like what the footprint is versus the height, talking about stacked townhouses, you say a fourplex situation or a walk-up, you're gonna have, you're gonna have gains and losses. But the fewer units you have typically, the more latitude, you're gonna have to work around value features such as mature trees, or be able to accommodate... around value features such as mature trees or be able to accommodate sufficient land drainage. I should, I should remind Counsel that our bylaws forbid someone to increase a drainage issue. So when we approve a development, whether it's a single-family, whether it's an addition to a house, whether it's multifamily or commercial, the administration requires, in cases such as this, a master drainage plan, and they would have to take out an application for a life-threatening permit. So they have to demonstrate to the administration that, at worst, there's no change to the drainage situation, at best, and in most cases, we're able to look to improve it. But clearly, when you have more impermeable land cover, that's a trickier situation to deal with, because as you guys know, the more hard-surfaced, the faster the flow, the more likely that a heavy rainfall, you're gonna have inadvertent flow on adjacent walkways and potentially further down the street, without a feature, engineer features such as wells and so forth.
As you heard a lot of the concern, well, you heard all the concerns yourself, Martin, I was trying to digest it through my mind, how you can address some of these water on up, if you would, just with regards to drainage plan, green space, playground areas, or lack of in the area. I think, if you look at it from a master plan, I guess you, how would you respond to that one, other than, like, we're blocks away from the school?
Yeah, it's tricky, Counsel, to hold a brand on a huge, by key basis, to introduce public amenities. What we, what we do have, we have tools under the Planning Act, so we can actually acquire additional park space in close proximity, pardon me, to a site such as this, or take cash in lieu of the space to improve nearby facilities. We could, in a zoning such as this, that involved residential, is actually a quest that the developer contribute a portion of the land to park space versus cash. My experience is, I like living down the street from a park, I don't necessarily want it to be right next to my house. So we would, yeah, we have some tools, but that's some of the planning work that Mayor Burley referred to earlier that we have to get on top of. We have clearly, over time, introduced new development and higher intensities of development in the absence of that, but it certainly makes it similar for you guys and clearer to the community when a decision like this is being made, what they're using in terms of guidance, when we have a more specific plan from Morden than when we have the SDW plan.
Then land use, and then just, in my mind, let's just, we looked at a master plan, and you probably in your mind have formulated what it may look like in our community. Would this be in a zoned area that would accommodate higher-density homes, or are you probably?
Yeah, and I'm not allowed to just have it in my head. The best plans, of course, are the ones that are paired with key involvement, key inputs from community members, as well as stakeholders such as you guys, of course, on council and the document. But we've got to make sure that we provide opportunities for people to have quiet drive with their property on one hand, but also introduce new families and new business opportunities. So what we need to, what we need to set out to do is put that together to build on the existing SDW plan. But without that, we still have to, you guys are still gonna be faced with decisions such as this, because applications can come forward to you guys, provided they don't directly conflict with the existing plan. If someone were to put in a meatpacking plant proposing for this property, that would come before you. But we can be a lot more nuanced, and we can consider the potential for properties such that there's better enough planning, what-if scenario process, rather than a case like this, where we have to kind of rely on experience, understanding of the community, the consideration that existing residents have made investment already. But we also want to make sure that we're consistent in dealing with these properties so that developers, whether they're from town, from the district, or from anywhere else, can make sound financial investments in this community, and that's the benefit of the plan.
And the only, I'm not, well, the issue with privacy, like the protection of privacy, and we've heard that several times today. Again, I don't have, I can't visualize it when you're, when you're adding high-density final homes to an area, how you're gonna guarantee the privacy of people's backyards when you're building.
Yeah, it's pretty rare to have a property that has street, 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 street pulling around it. So we're gonna have neighbors. It's a question of how many, and a question of whether they're having direct views, or if, you know, by window placement, balcony, outdoor space, use, use an element of privacy, the perception of intrusions reduced. And that's an urban design aspect that we can deal with, not just on this property, but on any property through the development agreement process. So what Counsel has the opportunity to do tonight, today, pardon me, to be doing that, is to have the applicant enter into a development agreement that speaks to the form of development, that speaks to elements of improvements to the property, location of features such as the waste receptiles, how many parking spaces, you know, in addition to the minimum required, the location of driveways, protection of city roll or trees, some allowance for properties on either side, which we can do through increasing yards beyond, separation space beyond the zoning bylaw.
Okay, any other questions? Is there an issue with regards to development plans right now with your, with our water treatment plan pending, or? And, your question, that's?
It wouldn't impact on this proposal, because there's no subdivision involved.
No subdivision, okay, good, got it. I don't have any further questions. Under the current zoning class, because it is a double-wide lot, they could subdivide it at four, essentially. If they were to build, say, a double Manchester, you'd have to do side-by-side by side-by-side walkouts, they could, they could effectively put four hoists on here without anything from council.
Yeah.
Density there would be, if you were to do that, the footprint would be one resident, one would be the ratio of 1 to 2.3 for those. With this proposal, it's almost identical, 1 to 2.3, but because it's, you're adding units vertically, you're actually, it's actually changing the prospect, but no barrage. The density is higher than those units, but then the question would be, would those units be a good fit for this location? And I don't think any of us would say yes, right? Those units could be built here right now without, without any input from council or any approval necessary, right?
That's perfect.
The footprint would be the same. The, if you envision it as, as two 18-foot wide, have duplexes on each lot, the setbacks would be four feet on each side, almost identically, but there's no driving to your yard, and that's the, that would be the biggest difference, I think, in terms of accruals, and you don't have the same number of vehicles, you have more green space. Any other questions for Mr. Sanders?
I kind of see what you're saying, because it's the same as what I was talking about, the side-by-sides. You've got your driveways in the center of the property, so you aren't talking side. But what you're saying too is you could, you could go off with the same design there.
Well, the point I'm making is simply that I don't think anybody, I don't, I don't think that those side-by-sides would be a good fit here, but it's possible to do them, right?
Right, yeah.
And yet, I don't think anybody in the room would be in favor of those going in there. So there's, there has to be some density change, and something's not going to go back to that unit, right? So it's a matter of which densities could be achieved while still maintaining integrity of the name program. All right, no other questions for Mr. Sanders? We are going to take a ten-minute recess for procedural, you know, just to get some procedural options. So it's 10:40. We won't have any discussion about integrity of the plot or anything, that it's entirely procedural, because we're all new at this. So I think we will take 10 minutes with city staff just to consider what our options are in this matter, and then we do have a second reading. No decision made today, objection raised, no, no, no decisions are final today. There's a hurdle, it still goes to a third and recorded vote. Counsel, can we, where are we as well? Yeah, okay, very good. If you need a washroom, there are washrooms in the facility, if you need water, I took that, I'm sure that can be accommodated. It's 10:40, we'll say 10:41, we'll meet back at 10:51. Thank you. I apologize for the delay, by the clock, it's 11:04, I told you all we had 10 minutes, we were 23 minutes. Oscar Wilde said, "The wheels of democracy grind, it seemingly slow," that's all that was happening. We have the resolution to rezone 212 Sixth Street from RT to RMM after consultation with city staff and planning. That density, we are going to decline, we have applications.
I'm sorry.
Right. So we have a resolution to close hearing. Where are we here? We have a resolution, we need somebody to move, somebody to second that.
Please move.
Okay, approved by Counsel Doug Frost, seconded by Court Gary Hebert, in favor of closing the public hearing. We are in, back in council. The decision for declining was the, the density on the parcel, the residential multifamily median class. We, we had significant input from our city planner in making this determination. We would like to continue to work with that parcel, but we are concerned about the densities of the proposed development agreement. So we are declining to move zoning amendment by law. So that closes the public hearing, 4.2 for variant order, will not occur, that public hearing will be held once a development agreement is in place. If anybody wants to stay for the rest of council, or Agenda Item Number 5, if you're here just for the hearing and you don't want to stay, feel free to leave, and the rest will continue to arrange the agenda.
Yeah, do we have to clarify what we've just done? So it's zoned RT, it's zoned RT right now, which means it allows for four units. So we have agreed to leave it at four units, correct?
Yeah.
So we are not, is zoning change?
Right, no, we did put a four-blocks up there, and it would not count us.
Yeah, and all of your properties are zoned RT, so?
Right, we have, we have an RMMS S variation order, which we won't, we can't act on. This is strictly to do with the RMM class itself, not any other class. We need to move her in secondary for that.
Do you want to read them, or?
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
That's the right one.
What are we signing?
Declining, a decline.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we had declining, so we probably need to use this.
So we're not?
We are not giving second reading.
Oh, we're not giving second?
Yeah, rejecting that.
Okay, so we don't need this.
Which one do you need?
Do we need anything?
Well, you can present it as a draft later.
Just turn it around, move right on there, you can write it on what you want.
So we'll?
Let's decline.
Move it and decline it?
Yes, we are rejecting, rejecting that proposal.
So you have to wait for it with any other?
We have to remove this or put it?
You can't, you can't bring forward a negative resolution, you have to bring forward the name.
Right, decline it, yeah.
But that's the wrong zoning class on there.
Okay, now you can read it.
Wait. No, you leave it there.
Well, we were moving for RMM.
No, we're not, we're declining this one.
Yeah, we're against it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to work against it.
Yeah.
But the development agreement was for RMM.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I see, okay.
Because we can't vote on something that's in the development agreement here.
Okay.
Okay, moved by Counsel Hank Kildare, seconded by Counsel Nancy Penner. Be resolved that zoning amendment bylaw 020219, an amendment of the City of Morden. Morden zoning bylaw, rezone the subject property from RT residential two-family district to RMM residential multiple-family small district, be given a second reading with objection, subject to the property, if owner entering into a development agreement. In favor, please indicate, opposed.
So it's not carried?
It's not carried, right. Okay, Agenda Item Number 4.
That motion has been declined, right? See that?
Yeah.
So are you clear in what's happening here?
So that big building's not going there?
Not as proposed, not as proposed.
Not as proposed.
Not as so sick, there's no influence.
But it doesn't preclude the developer from, for putting in a four unit?
Well, I, 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 I,[454.12]
We moved past three. Do you want to go back?
What's that? Oh, okay. I just wanted to recognize the issue.
It's through the store.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we just need to sort out the form sign here. See if I can find it. It will just make a form, I think, of 3.0 or something. Somebody wanted to move in second. Agenda item nine? Okay. I hope Gordon moves.
About 100 base hours.
Yeah, for us seconds in favor, issue of agenda. Opposed? None. Added additional agenda.
Okay, third story. Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate our community. First story just injected half a million dollars back into our community and surrounding area. That's one terrific organization and I think they should be commended. We heard a little bit from Andy in the police department on our community of the whole and reading the paper this past weekend on what they call the different organizations, our hospital, our medical center, and all these different places. It's just fantastic.
And I'd just like to recognize the Morton and District Horticultural Society for all the volunteer labor they're putting into Confederation Park with the weeding, the edging, manual removing of dandelions, working with the city arborist and the other Sean. And it's just a beautiful showcase of Morton right downtown and the volunteers that are going to...
Eight point three, moved by councillor Jim Hunt, seconded by councillor Nancy Penner. Be resolved that councillor adopted minutes from the committee of the whole meeting dated July 8, 2019. In favor, please indicate.
There's corrections to that. I think we were looking at the minutes just now. Was that councillor? Was that the rec?
It was attached to this?
That was attached to this.
Which one though?
That was the...
Attached.
It said Adney, Sager, it spelled wrong, and then also...
That's councillor Wayne.
Wayne is not included in the one that...
I don't know.
But she gave us the second copy. That was councillor Nancy Penner. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're... Sorry, sorry, sorry. That's all to take care of.
No, no.
Okay, I don't know which agenda.
So page 23 is where the minutes begin for July 8, 2019?
Maybe.
Page 23 of your PDF.
Councillor. Does she have a way of doing this where she can see the...
Should we all have? Is that it? Yes. All ready?
Any other concerns before we move to adopt the minutes? No? In favor, please indicate. Opposed? None. It's from July 8, 3rd. All right, 8.5, adopt the financial statements.
Accounts payable, 8.4?
Yeah. There you have it. Oh, yeah, 8.4. 8.4, accounts payable to June 30.
Again, just for the record on the accounts payable, whenever that motion gets brought forward. The, again, the checks that were issued this past month were accompanied by invoices and all councillors got a copy of the journal entry, the check registry, and had an opportunity to ask questions and get answers. I trust that everybody got the answers they needed, the questions that they had on those payments. So the... So I would move that the accounts payable to June 30, the approved as presented.
Good luck.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have a motion. Yeah. Okay, moved by councillor Hank Hildebrand, seconded by councillor Gary Hebert. Be resolved, councillor's recommendation being confirmed. Favor, please indicate. Opposed? All right, 8.5, save Morton official form, moved by councillor Hank Hildebrand, seconded by councillor Nancy Penner. Be resolved, the councillor adopted financial statements as of June 30, 2019. Everybody received a copy of the financial statements. Are there any concerns coming from the financial statements? A lot of votes to vote on 8.5. In favor, please indicate. Opposed? Motion carried. This is my resolution, so give me the chair to you. Do you want to sign it yet? I'm just...
Oh, yeah.
I have to give the chair.
Wait, are we going to discuss first or do you want to sign it?
No, no, we should have a discussion of this.
Okay.
But it's because it's my motion presenting on it. I would argue, favor, I can't do that to the chair.
So you're giving up the chair?
Yeah, so you are having the chair.
Okay, so there is a motion that Mayor Burley be authorized to attend. It's the Canadian Association of Professional Immigration Consultants in Niagara Falls in 2019. That's late fall this year. You've been asked, actually have an invitation to speak at this event. Are they paying your way or are they...
They don't do that.
Okay, so I guess as Morton immigration is, you know, we're out there and we're recognized for the, what we're doing with immigration and so hence Brandon's been asked to speak, or Mayor Burley's been asked to speak at this conference. Do you have anything further to add?
Yeah.
Is it a one day or a five day?
Three days.
Three days.
Yeah, so the value to the city, of course, is we have immigration. And I've spoken with Shelley, our immigration coordinator of ours as well, and she's hoping to attend as a panelist as well. The value to our city is that this is the route that the starter visa, the investment visa programs all go through. So high wealth individuals who are coming into startup businesses or to invest money in Canada, they're coming through this conference, they're coming through the immigration coordinators. So when Shelley and I went to the conference board summit in Ottawa, yeah, it was Ottawa, we made some really good contacts of Alberta that want to move here, started their own supply of business, and we're still in contact with them. This is an opportunity for us to present our program and, of course, the value of our immigration program is that we can go to investors and say, while the rest of Canada's having a crisis and a crunch in labor, we don't have that. So there's a lot of value to that and to be able to present that at a level to close to 1,000 immigration for day four, looking for somewhere to land their clients and somewhere that has a stream that can accept them, we could do that. And we initially looked at the idea of having a booth on the trade floor. It didn't seem to make a lot of sense because you're better off...
We're not.
Yeah, we're better off being able to present to people in a captured space rather than, and then work with trade show floor or lunch rooms or whatever it is. I think there's a lot of value to this and Shelley, I've had multiple discussions with her as well, and she's convinced that this is something that we need to do, be part of in order to continue the job on the side of our immigration program.
Could Shelley go under MCDs?
That's how we worked it. That's how we worked it when we went to Ottawa. Yeah, she went for MCDs, I went on behalf of the city.
So then your motion should include the three days indemnity and out-of-pocket expenses.
Yeah, sure.
Travel and...
Well, that's what it is, right?
Yeah.
Now, what I mean, the buying conflict on this is my motion. I mean, I think it's a good idea, I think there's value to it, but I wouldn't be broken if I didn't go.
How much water have you got left?
Is there none?
You're working for the city. You're not financially benefiting from it.
No.
Any other discussion? Do you want me to read this motion?
Yeah.
Okay, moved by Gordon Maddick, seconded by Hank Hildebrand. Be resolved that Mayor Burley be authorized to attend the Canadian Association of Professional Immigration Consultants in Niagara Falls in 2019 with indemnity for three days and out-of-pocket expenses. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
I have a stand to the record.
Well, you don't have to. Because you're...
Yeah, it's not like you're benefiting from it.
Oh, true. Yeah, I can change to a favor.
One opposed. No, he was. He...
Sorry, I had initially a stand.
True. He voted for it.
Okay, 8.7, this is, I would be, you know, the conflict on this one.
No.
No?
You're just reporting.
Okay, 8.7, again, it's a fact. You guys... Yeah, the last few pages of your agenda.
I'd like to speak to it because...
Go right on the right.
Yeah, right on the bottom. 27 and 30.
One more. And then that one. Turn its legs.
Yeah, as soon as you... If I can, are you presenting this one for payment the way it's presented, Brendan, or were you... Did I talk to him or I sent an email on this one and you said it was okay to change the one day?
Yeah, yeah. Just, you're talking about the FCM.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fine, whatever. I wasn't sure.
Well, is that okay? That's what you were remembering. Yeah. Well, you did, so just say the right one.
No, this is the right one. Just when the future expense team...
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay, so this...
There's not going to be any change because to check what the shoe by that time, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, just that there is one extra day on here and because the conference was done on the second and the third would have been travel day and this one included the fourth, so...
Okay.
Okay, so then that's what the adjustment is. Just reporting is expense claim. And it's up to you, like, I think you need to look at, like, these expenses to the year to date were at, according to budget numbers, they were at the maximum or a little better and with the payment of these, so do we want to, like, do you want to approve indemnity and mileage ahead of time or are you okay with Mayor Burley putting in the expense claim in for meetings he's attending on different areas? I mean, you look at the expense reports or do you want him to present the expense reports on them?
It's, councillor's, like, we're all redited on it, so you have to bring it to council because it's...
I think in the past, we've all, if we do have an event that was going on, then we would approve it ahead of time.
Yeah, just like we did here with the conference.
But then if there's something that comes up in the spirit, we've always retroactive, it's not included. And that's what we used to do.
Well, what do you want to do going forward? Like, I know what we, the past is not the same as the future, so...
I don't see any reason to change it.
Any reason to change?
Yeah.
So you want him to bring forward any requests to attend meetings ahead of time?
I mean, this one, like this one, like FCM, I don't even know. Well, I guess it's because of change, that assumption, wouldn't you need to be here? Because that's part of our policy.
Yeah, but you want an extra day on the expense sheet, okay? So it got approved for an extra day. So the guy that signed the check didn't sign it because it was an extra day on there, okay?
I would like to see especially out of province travel. Get your group out.
And then you got the next one is, okay, so there's a police board meeting and an airport meeting, so is that, like, we're not clear on our policy, what councils or mayors indemnity includes or does not include. So if we go to meetings like we did the other day in Winkford, is that expensable or is that not expensable? Well, you have to say yes or no. It's not a, you know, some people are putting it on and others aren't.
We get paid particularly small. We're just going for a lot of money, so I don't see why you shouldn't put them in if you want to win.
Right. Well, I didn't put on police board, it's the...
Well, it just says the June 17 police airport.
No, 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 that wasn't the meeting we had with them though.
Well, I don't know yet, that's what the purpose was.
That was the date before I had meetings with Martin and Stanley, the airport.
Okay.
But that was, I believe that was a half day.
Yeah, it was.
The one in the evening with the policy is such that if it's during regular hours, that's what those meetings are for, right?
If you're going to work on behalf of the city, I don't have that problem to hand for the top.
Well, it's not that, unlike clarity, that's why I brought up, I think, the committee of the whole, there's need clarity on, if, for instance, there's some things I'm working on, but they come to the element front where the opportunity comes up the same day and it's a high value opportunity.
Okay, let me just let the conversation go, I don't know, what are you saying there, Gary? Your general is talking about...
What we're saying is kind of what we had talked about before. If it's something like this where we can give pre-authorization to go, but in some cases there was, you know, it was after the fact because it had to be done immediately, so why can't we do both?
What do you want? Do you want him to bring his expense sheets to council or do you not want him to?
I thought the...
Like, you're over by the time you're coming out.
You talked about the past, but the past, this never came to council, this came to the committee.
But no, I know, mainly past is that we've gone six months already, okay, now we're in July, okay? So what do we do going from July to December? Okay, like, until June now, we haven't brought it forward to council.
Well, the extra dollars we put in for extra meetings is already been spent, right? So...
You can talk about discretionary.
On that, I don't know.
No, that got, remember, we had the discussion where all the items for discretionary, so it was the discretionary funding that got put over into my budget, which was why my budget is where it was at, right? Because it was $20,000 and never got properly put into the budget as presented.
So does going to Niagara Falls fall into your discretionary budget?
I don't know. I don't know where that falls. But things like capital, not capital items, but I just say the immigration program, citizenship class, that's currently all being allocated under my budget because the discretionary budget never made it in.
I thought that was correct. You had to go to Hall of Honor and meet with somebody. Are you, this going to Niagara Falls, I thought that was what the discretionary was...
I had a discussion with the discretionary budget was because it was used, for instance, to buy food for city workers, right?
Oh, okay.
So there was, it was kind of like pieces that we were like, these are valuable to us operationally, but we didn't go to council for it. So right now, all that's being sectioned underneath, which is life, I imagine.
You still need a policy about what's covered and what's not, so...
Yeah.
Do you want us to bring forward going forward from here to...
That is the policy I want to...
Just be clear.
Committee, yeah.
Okay, moved by councillor Nancy Penner, seconded by councillor Gordon Maddick. Be resolved that mayor expense report for the period of June 15 to July 19, he approved. All in favor? Things opposed? Motion carried.
Well, I welcome the justice action, I mean, when can we get it?
So this one will be depended on 2017 audited statements.
Yeah. And that is, you met with Todd recently, right?
We're still working on it. I owe him a bunch of stuff now.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Ongoing.
Well, I don't think, wait, wait, it might be a different term used.
Well, audit takes time. It's not a two-week turnaround.
Yeah, I know.
We deliver, they look at it, they ask question.
Are there insurmountable information that they need or is it...
There's some bigger items. It'll take some digging, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we know what the status is of, like, the funds, like for 17? Have you got all the funds for 16? The gas actually?
Yes.
17...
17 and 1.
One.
First payment, so the second payment of 17, this one will be dependent on 17 and then they just go subsequent to that.
18, we had to receive a first payment.
No, that I would think they will until 17.
It's a... We're running a whole piece that they were, that's right now. Great whole thing. 17 and 18, well, close, I think it's close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So take care of 8.8. Okay. Okay, new business. Agenda item number 11, moved by councillor Doug Frost, seconded by councillor Jim Hunt. Be resolved that councillor moved in camera. In favor, please. It's not moved in camera in the... All right, moved by, agenda item number 11, move by councillor Doug Frost, seconded by councillor Gordon Maddick. Be resolved that councillor moved back three to the meeting. Councillor approved the recommendations of the camera meeting. Favor, please indicate. No longer camera. Agenda item number 12, moved by councillor Doug Frost, seconded by councillor Gordon Maddick. Be resolved that we do now adjourn at 1:12. Favor, opposed, motion carried.